At this time, we call this special meeting for this hearing to order. We will stand for invocation. Pledge allegiance.
To our great Creator, we truly do thank you for this day, for we know that you are all-knowing, and we honor and respect you. We ask you to be in this meeting, that you will bring honesty, truth, and justice forth. We welcome you to lead us and guide us, that we would do what is best for all the citizens of this great city and beyond. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we are going to call this hearing to order, and it's a hearing for the removal of the Housing Authority Commissioner. And the hearing will be determined whether or not Ms. Linda Bakote shall be removed as a Commissioner of the Housing Authority for insufficiency, negligence of duty, or misconduct in office. At this time, I declare this hearing open and in order.
Madam Mayor, of course, it's the public body which appoints Commissioners to the Housing Authority of Florence. The South Carolina statutes give this Council the right to remove Commissioners upon a finding of inefficiency, neglect of duty, or misconduct in office. Section 31-3-370 of the South Carolina Code provides, however, that a Commissioner may be removed only after being given a copy of the reasons for removal at least 10 days before the hearing, before Council, at which time the Commissioner will be given the opportunity to be heard in person or by Council regarding those reasons for removal and present evidence regarding that. That's the purpose of this hearing today. Ms. Linda Bakote and her attorney, John Bledsoe, were provided with the required notice, and they are present here today to participate. I'm going to submit to Council as the first exhibit, and would ask that these be made part of the record, a copy of the notice of hearing for removal, and would present that as Exhibit 1. Mr. Bledsoe has copies of these. And that's simply the notice that was sent regarding this hearing. As you will see there, one thing I would point out is, obviously, that notice was originally for a hearing on May 31st at 10:00. As you all are aware, the hearing was postponed a couple of times, at least once at the request of Ms. Bakote's attorney because of a situation that had arisen with them. So we're all here today pursuant to that notice. As you are aware, Council conducted an investigation before determining that this action was appropriate to start this process. From that investigation, we are going to offer three exhibits as evidence for Council to consider as you make that decision. I want to note upfront that, as you all are aware, we do not, by statute, have subpoena power to force witnesses to come and testify. As a result, two of these exhibits are affidavits that are being submitted. I want to note for the record, and I have an actual written objection from Mr. Bledsoe, and, John, if you can help me, we'll be glad to put that written objection in as part of the record. He is objected because, obviously, by us presenting it as affidavits, they lose the opportunity to cross-examine the witnesses. We certainly would have preferred to have witnesses here, but without subpoena power, we couldn't force them to come. So we're going to offer, at this time, Exhibits 2, 3, and 4 to be made part of the record. And, of course, this is being done subject to Mr. Bledsoe's objection. John, do you have a copy? I've got a copy here that I can dig out. Okay. With John's permission, I'm also going to submit with this his written objection to these coming into the record.
Duly noted.
For the aid of Council, what I would like to do is to publish the affidavits, so that you all will be aware. Of course, you will have copies as you engage in your deliberations on this for you to consider, but I will very quickly go through and publish these affidavits. The first exhibit, 2, is the affidavit of Esperon Huggins, and I'm not going to read the preliminary, but this is a sworn affidavit from Mr. Huggins. And he indicates that he's over the age of 18 and competent to testify in the matters herein. "I have worked for the Housing Authority of Florence for 20 years, and I have served as Director of Facility Management for the last three years. In that capacity, I've been very familiar with and the supervisor of maintenance and repair efforts of the Housing Authority regarding properties it owns and/or manages. One such property managed by the Housing Authority under my supervision is the property located at 3654 West Point Drive, Florence, South Carolina. This location is owned by the Palmetto Housing Corporation, but is managed by the Housing Authority of Florence under a property management agreement. Since this property was acquired for rental as affordable housing, it has been leased to Ms. Linda Bakote and her husband. For the entire term of the rental by the Bakotes, Linda Bakote has served as a Commissioner of the Housing Authority, and for many of the years, Ms. Bakote served as Chair of the Board of Commissioners. I am personally aware that during this rental period, Ms. Bakote, on numerous occasions, used her position as a Commissioner to receive special treatment in the way her home was maintained and repaired. This occurred repeatedly when, unlike other tenants, Ms. Bakote required that certain employees in our maintenance department not be used at her home. In addition, Ms. Bakote would dictate when our crews could come to her home to do work by telling crews that they would have to come back at another time to be specified by her. Other tenants were not allowed to make such demands. In addition, there was at least one occasion when Ms. Bakote purchased new appliances for her home and required the personnel from our department to install those appliances for her. She also required our personnel to spend time doing measurements and assisting her in ordering fencing she was purchasing for the home. While other tenants are allowed to purchase new appliances with permission of the Authority, they are required to have them installed at their expense. Finally, when our department would do maintenance, such as repainting of the Bakote home or in the Bakote home, Ms. Bakote would require that certain colors of paint be used in her home. Other tenants were not allowed to choose colors, and the repainting of their homes was done with paints we kept in stock. While Ms. Bakote served as Chair of the Board of Commissioners, Ms. Bakote created a largely dysfunctional board that she convinced to support the executive director in anything the director wanted to do, and this resulted in many issues and questions regarding the operations of the Housing Authority. In summary, Ms. Bakote sought and received different treatment from other tenants of the Housing Authority because of her position as a Commissioner and the Chair of the Board of Commissions, and that's signed by Mr. Huggins." Exhibit 3 that you have is the affidavit of Monica White, and this is an affidavit of custodian of records. And Ms. White says, "I, Monica White, of the Housing Authority of Florence, being first duly sworn, depose it and say as follows. I am employed with the Housing Authority, which is located at 2311 West Palmetto Street in Florence, South Carolina. I am over the age of 18 and competent to testify as to the matters herein. Since October 2021, I have served as Director of Finance for the Housing Authority. In my capacity as Director of Finance for the Housing Authority, I have personal knowledge of the records included with this affidavit attached here to as Exhibit A, including a copy of a check number 188867 of the Housing Authority of Florence dated February 13, 2017, issued by the Housing Authority of Florence to, quote, 'Linda Bakote, B&amp;B Catering,' end quote, and the Housing Authority of Florence check history regarding check number These records are kept in the possession of the Housing Authority in the course of regularly conducting business, and it is the regular practice of the Housing Authority to retain the records. These records are kept under the custody and control of the Housing Authority, and, to the best of my knowledge, are true and accurate." And then we have the signature of Monica White, Director of Finance. And there are attached to that exhibit, as you will see, a copy of a check in the amount of $1,400 dated February 13, 2017, made payable to Linda Bakote, B&amp;B Catering. You see the back of the check endorsed by Linda Bakote. The final exhibit, I will not read to you, because I'm sure you're tired of hearing me read. As you all are aware, last week, the mayor received, and then Council members, I think, have also received, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority dated April 11, 2023, in which the Housing Authority passed a resolution that... Well, I guess I need to read this. It says, I'll read you the whereas and then the ultimate resolution. "Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of Florence met at 10:00 a.m. on the 11th day of April 2023 and recessed until April 12 at 11:00 a.m., and whereas the Authority is organized and operates pursuant to the South Carolina Housing Authority's law of the South Carolina Code as amended, and whereas the Commissioners of the Authority are required to comply with the South Carolina State Ethics Law Authority (Ethics Act) and other applicable South Carolina and federal law, and whereas the Commissions of the Authority are required to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest, and whereas the bylaws of the Authority grant the Authority the power to petition the mayor of the City of Florence to remove a Commissioner that has violated the Ethics Act, and whereas the Commissions of the Authority have determined that Commissioner Linda Bakote has violated the Ethics Act and other applicable law and the rules and regulations governing the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and whereas the Commissions of the Authority have determined that the conduct of Commissioner Bakote has placed the Authority and the residents served by the Authority at substantial risk. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of Florence, colon, 1, the Authority hereby requests that the mayor of the City of Florence take immediate action to remove Commissioner Bakote from her position as Commissioner on the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of Florence, and then, 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately." Says that Commissioner Thomas Porter moved the passage of the foregoing resolution. Commissioner Jay Gerard Multry seconded the motion, and the resolution was passed by the following vote: Ayes, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Multry, and Commissioner Porter. Nays, Commissioner Bakote. Not voting, Commissioner Mullins, and Hawkins. And it says, in parentheses, Hawkins not present. And then there's a certification that this is a true copy of the resolution by the Vice-Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, Rosa H. Mullins. With that having been presented, obviously, one of the main purposes of this hearing today is for Council to be able to hear a response to these matters from Mr. Bakote and her counsel. So at this point, what I would like to do is turn the podium over to John Bledsoe, a good attorney for partners. John and I have known each other for more years than either of us care to think about. But he is here on behalf of Ms. Bakote, and will present matters on her behalf.
Thank you. Will you call for Mr. Bledsoe, please? Thank you.
First of all, I'm not surprised that Esperon Huggins has refused to come testify in this case, rather hide behind his affidavit, because he knows he cannot be cross-examined because he's not here. His affidavit is full of false accusations, hearsay, and just plain lies. If he lied in this affidavit, I know that's why he's not here today. He didn't want to come testify and face the music. I'm going to point out each of the allegations in his affidavit, beginning with his affidavit's statement that Ms. Bakote created a largely dysfunctional board. First of all, Mr. Huggins never, never attended a single board meeting of the Housing Authority. So how does he know what happened at the board meetings or how Ms. Bakote conducted herself as chairperson? He doesn't. That's hearsay. He was told that by someone else, and he stuck it in his affidavit. He has no personal knowledge of that, none at all. Second, he talks about the fact that Ms. Bakote bought appliances and had them installed by the maintenance crew. That's a lie. Here are, and I'm going to give these, to have those appliances installed by Home Depot. But they were not installed by the maintenance crew. Mr. Huggins is just playing lies about that. I only have a few copies, but pass them around. John, if you would like, we can make enough copies where everybody has one, I'd say.
Okay, that would be right. That would be right.
And we will be taking these with us as well, so everyone gets a chance to see.
Mr. Huggins says that Ms. Bakote used special influence to repaint the inside of her house. Ms. Bakote wanted to paint the rooms of her house. She went to Ms. Elmore, who is the Executive Director at that time of the Housing Authority Board, and she asked, "Can we use different colors in our house?" And Ms. Elmore told her, "You can't if you pay for it." Mr. Huggins says that other tenants couldn't do that, but other tenants didn't have to pay for the paint. They used whatever paint was in stock. They didn't pay for paint. Ms. Bakote and her husband bought the paint and, in fact, did the painting. The maintenance crew was not involved in that paint job at all, and that's another falsehood by Mr. Huggins. He talks about the fact that Ms. Bakote refused to let certain employees come to the house to do repairs. He didn't name anybody. He didn't identify anybody she refused to let to come to the house. And he says that, at times, she would turn the maintenance crew away that was inconvenient come another time. He says other tenants couldn't do that, but that's not true. If the maintenance crews showed up at a time inconvenient to another tenant, all they had to do was say, "I'm sorry, it's inconvenient for you to come today, come another time." Any tenant could do that, not just Ms. Bakote. So that's another falsehood. About the catering business. Ms. Bakote was on the board for 18 years. She's still on the board at this time. 18 years. They came up with one check in 18 years that was made out for a catering service, and there's a full explanation for that. When Ms. Elmore was hired as Executive Director of the Board, she decided to have a little party to celebrate that. She had heard that Ms. Bakote did catering. She went to Ms. Bakote and said, "Would you mind catering this event for me?" Ms. Bakote said, "Yes, I will, but I cannot charge a fee. I can only get my expenses because of my situation with the Board." And that's what she did. That $1,400 was for expenses for the food and decorations for the catering. No profit at all. She made none. She didn't take advantage of her position and charge a profit. She did not do that. So that one check, and we admit that, no problem, but she didn't do anything wrong. She didn't charge a fee. She didn't make a profit. I think that's all that Mr. Huggins, all the falsehoods he has in his affidavit. Oh, there is a thing about the fencing. At one point in time, the Bakotes would put a fence in the backyard, so they went to Ms. Elmore, the Executive Director, and asked her if Palmetto Housing Authority Corporation, which controls this house as opposed to other Section 8 houses, Palmetto Housing Corporation would pay for the fence. Ms. Elmore directed Esperon Huggins to go out and measure for the fence to see if the Palmetto Housing Corporation would pay for it. They would not. So the Bakotes did not, at that time, do anything about the fence. Several years later, they did hire Mr. Wilbur Johnson to put up the fence. They bought the fence, they paid for it, Mr. Johnson installed it. Nothing to do with the maintenance crew at all. Another falsehood in Mr. Huggins' affidavit. That's why he's not here today. That's all I have at this time. I'd like to call Mr. Bakote first as a witness.
Mr. Bakote, please come forward.
Come up here, Mr. Bakote. I'll pull up the ladder. You want to sway him in? Mr. Bakote, what's your full name?
My full name is Thurman Lee Bakote, Sr.
All right, you're married to Linda Bakote?
Yes, sir, I've been married to Linda for 47 years.
All right. And you're aware, of course, that she's been as a Commissioner on the Housing Authority Board for a number of years?
Yes, sir. My wife was placed on the Housing Authority Board right after my tenure as School Board Representative. I served from 2006 to 2010.
Okay. Now, there were allegations by Mr. Huggins that y'all purchased some appliances and had the maintenance crews install those appliances. Is that true?
No, sir, it's not true.
What exactly took place?
We purchased new appliances in our home in 2021. We talked to, my wife talked to Ms. Elmore about us replacing those appliances, and they said that we could do so. We went to Home Depot, and we purchased a refrigerator, we purchased a microwave, the dishwasher, and the stove.
All right. Where'd you purchase them from?
Home Depot.
All right. Who installed those appliances?
Home Depot.
All right. I've given the Council several copies here, the original, and on the top it says, "Special Services Customer Invoice." Can you see that?
Yes, sir.
And what's it say in the middle of the page, highlighted in yellow?
It says, highlighted in yellow, and it's gold.
All right. And that's an invoice from Home Depot?
Yes, sir.
Were any members of the maintenance crew from the Housing Authority involved in the installation of those appliances?
No, sir. And not for the warranty to be good on the appliances that we purchased, the installation would have to have been done by the, by Home Depot and their people.
Okay, all right. Now, Mr. Huggins made some allegations about the maintenance crew and interference by Ms. Bakote with the maintenance crews. Who, in fact, dealt with the maintenance crews?
Whenever the maintenance crew came out to our home, I would always deal with the maintenance crew. Normally, my wife probably would be upstairs somewhere. When it came to our home, I would open the door, whatever the problem was, the concern was, I would direct them to that particular area, and I would lead them to do their job.
All right. Did Ms. Bakote ever have any direct involvement with the maintenance crews at any time?
No, sir, I would do that.
Okay, all right. Did Ms. Bakote ever turn any members of the maintenance crew away?
No, sir, that was the one that ever turned away, because normally, whenever there was a concern of something to be done at the home, they would give us a date and a time that the maintenance crew would come out to the house, and normally, we would be there, and there was never a time, if I can recall, that we turned them away.
Okay, all right. About the fencing, tell the members of Council about the fencing situation.
We wanted to put a fence up in our backyard. We are raising our granddaughter, and she was at the age to where, you know, your kids love to play in the yard, and we would have them... and we would have them out there in the backyard. But the, by the back of the house being open like that, there was a lot of concern about kids being snatched out of the neighborhoods, kids being snatched from the bus stops and things of that nature. So we, for the safety of our child, we wanted to have the fence backyard enclosed by fencing.
All right. And who did you contact about putting up a fence initially?
My wife talked to Ms. Elmore about doing that. Ms. Elmore sent Mr. Huggins out to our home. One afternoon, I happened to see him in the back, and I walked out where he was, and we exchanged words briefly. He said he was there, and Ms. Elmore sent him there to do some measuring because there's something came up about the fencing.
Okay. Did you or Ms. Bacote request Mr. Huggins to come out and take measurements?
We did not.
All right. You had no idea that was gonna happen until you saw him in the backyard, is that right?
That's true.
Okay. Did you ultimately put up fencing?
Yes, sir. Sometime later, we did put up a fence in our, as a matter of fact. Mostly the modifications that we did to our home, we did in 2021. On that particular day, when they picked up their appliances, it was a very unusual event. That was the day that our daughter, Deidre Davis, she passed away. Mr. Woods came out to the house and he picked up the appliances and...
The old appliances?
Yes, sir. We got a call from my son-in-law that she passed out, and we needed to get over there as soon as possible. We went over, we got her peers. Mr. Woods came and got the appliances, and we were there waiting to hear what was going on. It's ironic because she passed away, we had the setting up at our home, and we had no stove. We had no refrigerator. None of that stuff had been removed.
The old ones?
Old stuff, yes.
And the new ones had not been installed yet?
Right.
By Home Depot? All right. Did you ultimately put up fencing in your backyard?
We did. We got, that was about six months after her passing.
All right.
We got Mr. Johnson, River Johnson, to come...
All right, let me show you this. This is proposed by Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
To install the fencing?
It is.
Who measured the fencing?
Mr. Johnson, he did.
Who put the fencing in?
Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Did the maintenance crews or any member of the maintenance crews from the Housing Authority have anything to do with the fencing being measured or installed?
No, sir, they did not. After the fishing, the fence had been put up. I forgot why Mr. Woods was out at our home, but he happened to see the fence up. And he asked me who installed it for us. He was looking at having some work, having a fence put up at his house and wanted to know who installed it for us, and I told him, "Mr. Johnson did."
Okay, all right. Do you personally know anything about this catering job that was done for Ms. Elmore?
Yes, sir, I know that my wife, what, what happened was the food and the decorations that were a part of that event, we just only got the cost of what it cost us to do that. The cost of buying the food and decorations that were put up. Other than that, we didn't charge to make a profit from that, being that it might, you know, be a conflict of interest. You know, that was basically it. We, we just did the cost what it cost us.
All right. You didn't make a profit at all?
We didn't try to.
Didn't charge a fee?
We didn't try to.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, that's all I have of this witness.
Thank you at this time. Do you have another witness?
Ms. Bacote, please.
Ms. Bacote, would you please stay standing here? Thank you, Ms. Bacote.
You saw him swear from the evidence you're about to give. We approve of that.
All right, Ms. Bacote, you have a soft voice, and you're gonna have to kind of, you'll talk a little louder, okay?
I would say good morning to everyone.
All right. What's your full name, Ms. Bacote?
Linda Crawford Bacote.
All right. And I believe you've been on the Housing Authority Board for about 18 years, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you have served as chairperson for the last six years up until January of this year, is that correct?
Yes, yes, correct.
And I believe you decided not to run for chairperson again due to health reasons.
Right.
All right. Now, while you were on the board... While you were on the board and when you were elected as chairperson, how would you describe the functioning of the board under your guidance?
It was great. Everything, we meet, the meeting went very well. It was a very good board, and we had a very good board.
Okay. And when you decided not to run again for chairperson in January of this year, did the board do anything for you?
Yes, sir, they did. They had a reception at Victus, and I gave you a plaque.
All right. I'm gonna publish this plaque. Housing Authority Florence, growing strong communities. We, the Housing Authority Board of Directors, present to Linda Bacote this award of recognition. We would like to recognize your six years of outstanding service, loyalty, and dedication in your job as board chairman for the Housing Authority of Florence, 2016 to 2022. Now, Mr. Bacote's already testified about the catering job.
Yes, sir.
Did you charge or make a profit in any way in doing that catering job for Ms. Elmore?
Yes, sir. With, I did. In fact, it was over fourteen hundred.
What it actually cost you was more than fourteen hundred?
Over fourteen hundred.
Okay. Did you solicit that catering job?
No, sir, I did not.
How did it come about that you did the catering?
And Ms. Elmore approached me and said, "I heard that you was a caterer." And she asked me what I catered her, um, affairs. And I told her, "I can't go on for cost. I could not charge a fee for my, for my business."
And why did you feel that you couldn't charge a fee?
Because it'd be a conflict of interest.
Okay, all right. Now, did you ever have any direct dealings with the maintenance crews from the Housing Authority?
No, sir.
All right. If some maintenance needed to be done, how did you acquire it?
I called Ms. Stevens.
Who is Ms. Stevens?
Um, she's, um, she's a director.
Okay. You would call her and tell her you needed a maintenance, some maintenance taken care of?
Yes, sir.
Did you call Mr. Huggins?
No, sir.
Did you ever deal with Mr. Huggins?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. And Ms., what'd you say her name was?
Stevenson.
Ms. Stevens, and she made the arrangements for the maintenance crews to come out?
Yes, sir.
All right. Did you ever turn any maintenance crews away?
No, sir.
Did you ever have any direct dealings with any maintenance crews when it came to your house?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. All right. I believe that's all I have of Ms. Bacote. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bacote.
That's the case from Ms. Bacote.
Thank you. At this time, has all evidence been presented to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. So the council is aware, I wanted to bring it to your attention that Mr. Multry, one of the board members, has shown up at the hearing and just leaned over to Scotty and I and said that he would like to testify. Obviously, the only matters that are before council today are the reasons set forth in the notice. But I will leave it up to council as to whether or not you all want to hear Mr. Multry as a witness. I was not aware he was gonna be here. He just leaned over to Scotty and I and said that he was here and would like to testify.
Mr. Blesso, sir.
I would object that I'm blindsided by, I haven't heard anything about him coming or testifying as a witness. The issues are before council and Mr. Huggins' affidavit and the affidavit of the record custodian, and I was simply unprepared and blindsided by him testify.
Thank you. Council, you've heard the request, and you've also heard Attorney Blesso. He's not had time to speak to this witness. We have evidence presented before us. Any of those who are in favor of having Mr. Multry speak, please raise your hand. We have one. All opposed, please signify by showing of hand.
Have we got the votes, ma'am?
We got them.
We need to vote, we need to be, no one. So, due to the fact that attorney has not had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Multry, and we do have evidence before us, we will not entertain any additional witness at this time.
Madam Mayor, the only thing in closing that we would suggest is that council focus on the reasons for removal that are set out in the notice, and we will have copies of all of those and the exhibits for all of you if you want to have them with you while you deliberate this matter. And of course, you've got the matters presented by Ms. Bacote and her counsel. So it's up to council to decide whether or not you find that there's evidence to support these findings of inefficiency, neglect of duty, or misconduct in office, and therefore determine whether or not to remove Ms. Bacote as a commissioner of the Housing Authority of Florence. So that, that will be a decision for council to make. And the way you should make that ultimate decision is with a motion and a public vote. I think it is appropriate for you all to go into executive session, if you so choose, to deliberate, but not to vote. Your ultimate vote on this needs to occur in public as a result of a motion.
But we don't have the obligation to determine guilt or innocence. That's not what we're here, here to do today. What, what we have to do is under Section 313, 370, is to determine whether we remove a commissioner because of either inefficiency, neglect of duty, or misconduct in office. You, you have served for several years in the Housing Authority, greatly appreciated. And that service is, is a privilege, it's an honor. And you serve at the will of council, and you serve to represent council. So, you know, you, you are, you are our voice on that board. And so whomever appointed you or reappointed you, they, they did that with you being their voice. You know, so what we're looking at today is whether, you know, we deem that you've been inefficient, you know, neglectful in your duty or had misconduct in your office. And when I looked at the definition of misconduct, it's simply unacceptable or improper behavior. Unacceptable meaning not satisfactory and not pleasing or welcome. And, and simply where we are today, Ms. Bacote, with the recent removal from, or recent request to be removed by the Housing Authority Board, with the, with the situation bringing us to this, to this day, you know, simply put, I'm not pleased with where we are today. I'm not pleased personally with this situation. The Housing Authority is to help people that are in need of housing. You know, they're to be the focus. You know, there's, there's plenty of people with need. Affordable housing is a big issue in the city of Florence. We have people that are suffering, you know, daily. And, and this takes away, these types of activities, the situation on the current board takes away from that. And that's why I'm not pleased, because we're here today when, when the board needs to be focused on other things. And, and you've had a, a long, lengthy service, a service that's been recognized and honored by your peers. And, and so, and I appreciate that. But it is my motion that we remove Ms. Linda Bacote as commissioner of the Housing Authority effective today, based simply on misconduct in office. Just the fact that where we are today is not satisfactory, satisfactory or pleasing to me, and, and I would ask, you know, that the council consider that.
Before we move forward, I would ask that we're in the midst of a hearing, which evidence has been presented or exhibits. So with that motion being on the floor, do we have a second? Or do we want to proceed to go into executive session so we can review the evidence as presented to us, discuss it, and then come back to vote? That's for the council.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the motion can be made, and then if there's a second, then we can discuss whether or not to go into executive session after that.
We can't go either way. You can either get a second, or either you can go ahead and proceed to review the information and then come back out. So that's up to the council, how the council chooses to proceed. Do we have a second on that?
I have a second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. And that motion is to proceed with the removal of Commissioner Linda Bacote from the Housing Authority Board. Any discussion?
I, I wanna say a few things.
Chair recognizes Councilman McCall.
Yeah, but now I feel, I feel I would be able to say something. I will say first, Ms. Bacote, your service of 18 years is, is definitely noted. And definitely, I think it's, we, we encourage a lot of people to, you know, definitely give up their time. You know, you're not getting paid as a board member. But it's, it's been 18 years. Echoing the sentiments from Councilman Braddock, I think the entire council is very unpleasant with the current makeup of the board. Now, I think the biggest thing of this hearing is, of course, you have the opportunity to present your case. And this is a public hearing. I, I know your name has been all out of the public, public eye of the last couple of days. Your, your attorney, you know, presented your case for you, and it's up for the public to, you know, to decide on the, whether or not they, you know, believe the truthfulness of your case. But nonetheless, I would say, again, the, just the inefficiency of the council, sorry, of the board itself alone. And you was a chair for six years. So I'm basing my decision off of inefficiency of the reason why I will vote to, for your removal. But nonetheless, I think I do appreciate what you've done over the years of 18 years. And I would encourage other members of the ci, of the city of Florence, or citizens of the city of Florence, to, you know, definitely consider serving this 18 years, and it's voluntary service. And I definitely understand, you know, where you're coming from and trying to defend your name. But I think the inefficiency of the board is why we're here today. So I will be going to refer a move.
Any other discussions and other comments? You have a motion? Chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote as well.
And you, and I. Put it forward, right. Any other discussions and other comments?
Just for the record, Madam Mayor, probably ought to put on the record that Councilman Smith has accused himself throughout this process of being involved in any discussions because prior to being on council, he served on the board of the Housing Authority. And so throughout this entire process, he's not been involved in any discussions.
Chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Just briefly, I also want to echo the appreciation of the service that has been done. The influencing factor for me, and I'll just say, it's affidavits or whatever, that's really, I'm not, I understand what you presented, and I appreciate the being, being presented with all of that. To me, the critical piece was the resolution from the Housing Authority Board for me, and that was a big, that really heavily influenced my decision on what to do here in this case. Obviously, those are your peers that are there in the same room, on that same board. And so for that reason, I'm going to be supporting also the decision to, for the removal.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Florence.
I, I would like to say, I think, when we appoint people at the will of council, like Councilman Braddock said, it is for them to speak our voice. It's an extension of us. And when we put you on the board, any board, we expect you to do the bidding of the people. It is not for gain. So I, I think that, I want to thank the board for stepping up and doing the job that you were placed on, because it should not come back to council for us to tell you what to do inside of your meetings. That is up for the, the board to do. And the board presented a resolution asking for the removal, and I too, I agree with my colleagues in order for us to move on after 18 years. Normally, people don't serve over that time anyway. It's time for some young blood or some new blood to come in. And so to the, to the board, I thank you for stepping up and, and doing what you should have done probably nine months ago, and we wouldn't have been here, but thank you.
Any other comments on the board at this time? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lisa Jackson.
I just want to say there are no winners here today. This is a sad day for everyone. This is not something that council wanted to do, but it was something, obviously, that had to be done. But again, there are no winners today, and we got to try to move on from here. Thank you.
Does that conclude the discussion for the council? If so, you have a motion on the floor to remove Commissioner Linda Pecote from the Housing Authority. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and opposed by a sign. Hearing nine, the question to have the removal of Commissioner Linda Pecote, Mr. Arvind, been established. That completes our agenda audit for today. Do we have a motion to?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing knows. No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and opposed by a sign. We hereby stand adjourned.